Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Glad to see you here. Today is August 31st, 2022, and it is 5:00 PM. As a quorum of the board is in attendance, I'd like to call the order, call to order the meeting of the Central Health Board of Managers. The first item of business today is the public hearing. Members, this meetings, this evening's hearing is the official public hearing required by the Texas Tax Code, which we announced in our previous meeting on Wednesday, August 24th, 2022. Notice of this meeting's public hearing was published in a general circulation newspaper, was posted on the main page of Central Health's website, and has been broadcast on Travis County Television and radio stations. The hearing will begin with staff's presentation of the budget and proposed tax rate. At the conclusion of the presentation, we will invite comments from the public. To make comments during the public hearing, members of the public must either be physically present here at Central Health or have registered with Central Health via the online form or by telephone no later than 3:30 PM today. When we open the public comment, we will alternate between speakers who are onsite at Central Health and speakers who have joined the public hearing virtually. And I'd just like to say that the public hearing is actually one of the most important parts of what we do here, because we want to hear and understand from the people that both pay for the services that we allocate out and those that receive the services that we allocate out, what their ideas are, what their comments are, what their concerns are. So we look forward to hearing your input. Agenda item number one, present an overview of the proposed Central Health Fiscal Year 2023 Budget and its associated tax rate. Lisa Owens will be presenting.
Thank you. Good evening. Lisa Owens, Deputy CFO. This evening, I'll present a high-level summary of the proposed tax rate as well as our proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. On the first slide, there we go. Thank you. We are proposing a tax rate of 9.8684 cents for $100 of valuation. That tax rate is 6% greater than the maintenance and operations, no new revenue rate. And it also includes not only the maintenance and operations rate, but also the debt service rate as outlined on the slide that you're seeing right now. We also are proposing, and this board approved, homestead exemption of 20%, which is the maximum allowable by law, and for 65 and older and disability, 100, an additional $110,000 exemption. We estimate for the average taxpayer in Travis County that this will impact them by just under $4 or approximately $4 lower tax bill this year. As a result of increasing assessed values, the rate is going down a little bit compared to last year. The next slide. This proposed rate will bring in approximately $281.6 million in property tax. Property tax is our primary source of revenue. We estimate approximately $300 million in revenue or sources of funds in our FY23 budget. And as we presented to the board last week, our uses of funds are in our two programs, primarily healthcare delivery, 280 million in healthcare delivery and approximately 22 million in uses for administration and tax collection. We also estimate to have $302 million worth of uses. So again, our proposed tax rate is 9.8684 cents for $100 of valuation. I'd also like to just go to the next slide and let everyone know that we have all of our presentations, all of the information contained in our previous presentations, as well as our community engagement report, which will be coming tonight, will be shared on our website, which we keep updated daily throughout the budget process. And lastly, the next action for this is to reconvene next week, September 7th, where the Board of Managers will vote on the proposed tax rate and the proposed budget. And then on September 20th, the Travis County Commissioners will vote on our tax rate and our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And just to reiterate, you know, we had a lot of information provided to us with regard to the budget, and all of that information is located online for individuals who want to take deeper dives into what we've seen in our budget process and how we got to the point today. So I encourage you, if you're so inclined, go to the website and look at those documents and sort of find out how we got to where we are today. Okay. That being said, agenda item number two is to receive public comment on the proposed Central Health Fiscal Year 2023 Budget and its associated tax rate. Your Senia Ramos of Central Health Communication Department will briefly cover the guidelines for the public hearing portion of the meeting and will then call upon members of the public to comment. Once you have been recognized, please approach the podium if you are physically present, or if you're attending virtually, a member of the staff will unmute your microphone and invite you to turn on your video if you wish. Please begin your comments by stating your name. There is a three-minute limit for comments per board rule. Your Senia?
Nobody signed up to speak for this public comment.
Thank you, Senia. Seeing that we have no comments at our public hearing, I am now ready to accept a motion to close the public hearing. I have a motion from Manager Valdez. I have a second from Manager Brinson. Any further discussion? Manager Musaiti.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lisa's presentation. It's unfortunate that we have not heard from the public. I was really hoping to hear from them directly over our proposed budget. So I'm glad that we tried, we did our outreach for our community, but unfortunately, no one has come forward with any comments. Thank you.
And as you know, Manager Musaiti, we have had a number of community conversations about our budget, and they were, I attended one, it was very well-attended, lots of questions, lots of great answers. I know I learned a lot. So I don't think this is indicative that the public is not engaged, but we just didn't have anyone here for the public here. Manager Jones?
Well, excuse me, will there be opportunity for public input next week at the actual voting time, where people will have the opportunity, even though we're voting at night, I'm just wondering if there will be?
I am hearing, are seeing David's head shaking over here in my peripheral vision. He says yes.
I would just reinforce, and I know they've done a great job, I don't imply that they have not, but anything we can do to get the message out, to remind folks that next week will be their last opportunity before a vote is taken, that the staff will do that.
And I know, like you said, that, you know, you're not faulting, because I, I've heard about this hearing at least every morning on NPR, every morning. Now, I'm not saying that everybody listens to NPR, but I know the message has been out there for sure.
I've told many people, so I, it's somewhat disconcerting that no one is here tonight, but...
Manager McWhonny?
Again.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it's sort of in response and summation, response to summation of the comments from Managers Musaiti and Jones and what you mentioned about the community conversations. First, I want to apologize for not having been able to have made one of the community conversations. I was invited aggressively by staff, and I really appreciate that. I'm sorry I couldn't make it. And I'm glad to hear that they weren't even well-attended, and hopefully that does bode well for governance in general, meaning that the outreach has gotten better, the feedback is received kind of more upstream in the process, and, you know, just as far as moving forward with the rubber stamping formalities, not that anything is ever rubber stamped, everything should be turned over a million times. I'm not, I'm actually kind of encouraged by that notion. So, thanks.
I do think that the mode of the community conversation is more of a dialogue, while public hearings tend to be just one person talking and us listening. And so I believe that that has more of a, it's a more desirable way for human beings to communicate with one another, as opposed to just a one-way, you give me information, I'm listening, I'm not going to make any comments. So, Manager Musaiti?
Following on that point, not all of us were able to attend these community conversations, so we were not apprised of what discussions happened during that meeting. So as well, just to be mindful of that. Here, we're a board, we speak as a whole, we make our decisions as a whole, but it could have been some, an issue or a matter of interest just directed to one board member, and it's just a one vote. So we all, we welcome them to come forward for anything before our final budget vote next week, and appreciate you.
Yeah, yeah, and I totally agree with that. I think that, and just to reiterate, those community conversations were televised when they could be, or on the internet, not televised. So individuals who couldn't make it, at least the ones that were held here at Central Health, where we have the equipment to do it, they were actually out there for other individuals to see. So I do believe we did as much as we can to make sure that individuals knew about our budget and understood it. Manager Valdez?
I tend to agree with the spirit of what everybody has said today, and I do believe that the community conversations is a good way to talk about our budget. I attended the last one, and as Mike and our staff would have heard, I specifically encouraged everyone to share the fact that we were going to have a public hearing and we're going to be voting on the budget with all their networks, not only with themselves, but with their networks and their contacts. And, and it was well-attended. It was the one that was held here, and, and it was televised because we have the equipment here. We don't when it's at the Southeast Health and Wellness Center or somewhere else. But I do want to say to the public that you are still encouraged to participate, to make your phone calls or send in emails, and we'll have a public communication, public communication next week, if you want to get your, your two cents in prior to us voting, listening to the presentation again. I think we've memorized it and, and voted and vote on it. So if you're, if you're so disposed, please participate during our Central Health meeting. It's okay to go and talk somewhere else, but what matters for us is what you say here at Central Health, because this, we are the ones that are making the decisions, and we'd like to hear from you with respect to our budget and what it is you would like to see also in regards to initiatives or things that you would like for us, to see us do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Valdez. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? The public hearing is now closed. Okay. And it is 5:15 PM. As the Chair of the Central Health Board of Managers, I announce that the board will be voting on the proposed tax rate in the Board of Managers meeting next Wednesday, September 7th, at 5:00 PM, here at Central Health Headquarters, 1111 East Cesar Chavez Street, Austin, Texas, 78702. I'd like to recognize David Duncan of the Travis County Attorney's Office for a couple of announcements about preparations for that next meeting. David?
Managers, David Duncan, Travis County Attorney's Office. Just a couple of quick reminders, these are all things you've seen that you've been sent emails about. The first one is, I am going to send out, or I'll work with Perla, one of us will send out, possibly McKenzie, a reminder about duality of interest, possible vote structure for the budget. Every year, we do a vote, and we call out specific entities that a member may wish to abstain on. I will send you the version from last year, most likely, I'll just send out the way we did it last year. And I will ask, is there any entity you would like us to add or take your name off as a, as a member who is likely to abstain on that item? So I'll be sending that out before the end of the week, most likely, early next week at the latest. And then the other thing is you were sent an email about the process for suggesting offering amendments to the budget or the budget resolution, so that Jeff and Lisa can look at them, and I can, we can look at them to see how they would affect just the general tenor of the, of the budget and, and how it would, how it would affect that overall process. And the deadline for that was, I apologize to you, I believe, I think it was the day before the meeting.
Has Perla sent out a communication? Perla, could you remind us the deadline?
So...
Or the timeframe, yeah.
Hi, this is Perla Cabasos. I sent out an email about the duality and conflict of interest yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, and then last Monday, last week, I sent out the process for submitting edits to the budget resolution. And if we could just receive those, if any, we have received some by Thursday, that would be great, because we would like to send out the budget resolution draft on Friday with the board packet.
Yes, Mr. Dees.
That also applies to any actual amendments to the budget itself, which, I mean, obviously at this stage in the game, adding additional dollars, but still, you know, we respect the fact that you may want to put that forward, but it's something that, to David's point, needs to be submitted, so that Jeff and Lisa and legal counsel can take a look at it.
Manager Musaiti?
I have a question. David, the resolution that you will share with us, would that be public, or is it just amongst us, board members? Then when would it go public?
If, if I'm sending it, it's attorney-client, so it will be, it will be confidential, and it's an attorney-client confidential communication until it's put out in the backup, which, as Perla said, would probably be Friday. We try to put that, that material out to you all before the weekend, so you have some time to review it.
Manager Valdez?
So to clarify, David, would you, make sure I understood what you just said. So it's public information when we get our packets on Friday?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, David. Now that the public hearing of the Central Health Board of Managers regarding the fiscal year 23, 2023 tax rate is officially closed, we will begin the Board of Managers meeting. Members of the public, public communication. Members of the public who wish to make comments during the public communication portion of the meeting must have registered with Central Health via the online form or by telephone no later than 3:30 PM today. Your Senia, did anyone register to make comments before our meeting today?
No, Mr. Chair, we did not have anybody sign up to make comments.
Thank you very much. Manager Valdez, did you call and leave a message?
Yes, I called and left a message. And what it does is when I answer, I mean, when the phone is answered by a voicemail, it says it's sending it to Elizabeth, and I don't understand the last name, but it's not Marero, it's, I don't know what the last name is. And so that's where it goes. And every time I call here, it's been more recently, no one's answering the phone, it goes, leave a, please leave a message, and it's being sent to my voicemail to Elizabeth somebody else. Somebody call up there and you can hear the message. But I called and left a message and asked them to please let you all know that, that I wanted to speak. It'll be short.
You have three minutes.
Oh, no.
Yes. You're on.
Okay, thank you. This is regarding the presentation that was made to us and the request that has come via letter from Dr. Jaclyn Angel, I think, in the, the community organization or group that, committee that is meeting to develop a senior citizen activity center at the Nash Anonius Building, which is the old, the old fire, fire station there on the LBJ or LBJ property where Comal dead ends. And so I know that they did not make a budget request, but the ask was also that someone from Central Health participate on the committee. And if there are no staff people that have time to participate in this committee, those that are, those like myself that are aging, we're old baby, baby boomers that have grown old and are now in the geriatric stage of life, relatively old stage of life.
Getting a little sensitive here.
If, if in there, I know, I know, I resemble that remark. Well, if there are not any others that are interested, I will, I would like to sit in on those meetings, if nothing else, so we have someone from Central Health there, and see what it is that they're doing, because they have been meeting for two years. And so I'm just offering that suggestion, because I know that for next year's budget, they're going to be wanting to put something in with respect to at least one LVN or a registered nurse to help provide services, like a placeholder for when that activity center is up and running. But it is going to be a senior activity center and intergenerational, I think is what they're calling it, because they're also going to be working in partnership with Mendez Middle School and some elementary school. I just don't know which one, I don't know with Sanchez or what, but I'll get more information. And that's the only thing I was going to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Valdez. Manager?
I guess my question goes to what Manager Valdez said in terms of her communication with, with the office. So you're saying you're called here, left a message, and it went to voicemail, and our staff was not able to be aware of your wanting to. My question is, if that happened with this, could it have happened with the public hearing?
Well, it is possible.
This has been a, a pattern for the last, at least the last couple of weeks. Well, I'll call, I'll call in and it will go to voicemail, and it's telling me that the message being forwarded to an Elizabeth somebody, I think it's with an F. So you hit one because you want to speak in English, and then I hit three because I wanted to go to Central Health messaging service, not to the map or anything else. And then I leave my message, and it tells me that it is being sent to the voicemail of an Elizabeth somebody.
You have somebody that, Ted, were you going to respond, or?
Well, I want to make sure that, sorry, I want to make sure that we're using the right phone number is one question. I was also just texting Mike McKenzie and see if he might know what the situation is, because your Senia says she received your voicemail for last week. So we received it last week, but not this week.
And I did it today, right before 3:30. And one more thing, I did also get some phone calls from people, because on the update that we received from Central Health Office, the staff, there is, I think the second line, it talks about a call-in for your free COVID at-home test. It doesn't give a number, so I'm assuming that that, if we want to call in for that, we call in our Central Health number, because it doesn't give one in the update that was sent to us as board members and that went out to the community members. So I got some community members calling me up, saying that they had tried calling. Nobody knew what they were talking about. So that was in our update that was sent to us.
Okay. Chair, I just want to make sure, and see if they can answer. If the number that was provided for people to do, participate in public hearing, which we had nobody to participate, is it conceivable that perhaps endowed and had the same experience as Manager Valdez? I'm not saying they did, I just want to see if we could check into that.
We'll check into anything that's conceivable, so we can definitely check and see what happened. I want to be clear on the email that went out, there was no phone number, it was a, you clicked to order the free at-home testing kit, and this is the one that's coming from the federal government, and the Biden administration has ended that as of Friday. So we were trying to get folks to order their kids before Friday, because that program is ending.
This past Friday, this coming Friday?
This coming Friday.
No, that's right, that's right.
But there is, there was no phone number, it's...
That's right, so...
It's, you order online.
My, my, my question was... Well, related to that, my question related to the public hearing.
Right, I was just trying to...
The messaging, that when I call and leave a voicemail. Sorry, excuse me.
And I agree, anything's conceivable, but when we're talking about public hearing, the fact is very serious and conceivable if we didn't do it. So I just want to make sure that our systems were in place to make sure that if people followed them, that it was correct, because it's a very serious concern if all of a sudden I start hearing from people, I called, I left a message, but no one followed up, so that's...
And I definitely...
Someone just tested it and said there's an extra, a voicemail that explains how you sign up for public communication, that it's working, and the number is 978-9190.
And the other, hold on, Manager Valdez.
I just need to clarify something. The number that I called was the 9788000 number, not the 91...
That's not the right number.
But I called the wrong number.
There you go.
Sorry, I apologize.
Okay.
But it still sent me to Elizabeth somebody.
Because I was, it was interesting that you brought your comment up, I thought you made a good comment.
That's right.
But the last meeting, we had a number of individuals that got through, and they testified or provided comment. I totally agree.
I just wanted to make sure, based upon what the manager has said, that there was...
All right. So where am I? Oh, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
We will now proceed to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, C1, receive the Central Health Order III Investment Report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Manager Valdez?
I move that we approve the consent agenda item C1.
Do I have a second? Manager Musaiti? I have a motion from Manager Valdez, a second from Manager Musaiti. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to limit debate for all items in the regular agenda for this evening, and we can limit it to five minutes if you guys would provide the motion. Manager McWhonny?
I moved to limit debate to five minutes. Thank you. Yeah, I moved the Board of Managers... This is Manager McWhonny, I moved the Board of Managers limit debate on all items on the agenda to five minutes per member per item.
I have a motion for Manager McWhonny. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Manager Valdez. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number one, receive and discuss an update on community engagement and outreach regarding the Healthcare Equity Plan and the FY 2023 Budget and Strategic Priorities. Ted Burton, Yvonne Davila, and your Senia Ramos will be presenting. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are going to present on the community engagement and outreach efforts supporting our Healthcare Equity Plan, our FY 23 Budget and our strategic priorities. The conversation that you were having during the public hearing portion of this meeting really teased this up very nicely, so we can talk to you about all of the things that we've done to outreach to our community. So we can talk to you about all of the things that we've done to outreach to our community. In previous meetings, we have shared with you our outreach efforts regarding how we reach our patient population. And by that, I mean people who are at or below 200% of the federal poverty level, people who are enrolled in coverage programs and those who are not. So those that we want to talk to about fully utilizing their coverage programs and those that we need to get connected to care, connected to coverage. But tonight, we're talking specifically about our work on the healthcare equity plan and the FY 23 budget, community conversations and other outreach activities. We work closely with the data and strategy team to identify areas where the highest concentration of our patient population lives. And so just want to you to know that we always use data to guide the work that we're doing. The engagement efforts for our healthcare equity plan and budget, however, expanded beyond our patient population and included Travis County residents at large, partner organizations and of course, patient-facing advocacy groups. Sorry, I'm tongue tied. And tonight with me is, are my colleagues Ivan Davila and Yusenia Ramos. And Ivan will start the presentation.
Ted, next slide please, and next slide. So as Ted mentioned, so we have two overarching objectives or goals for our community engagement activities. Number one is educating, as Dr. Bell said earlier, and I thought it was a very well put, making sure that we're educating those who pay for services in Travis County as well as those who are receiving services about central health functions, about how we pay for medical services and about the healthcare equity plan and of course, also our budget priorities. Number two, we also want to make sure that we're gathering input from these audiences that I just spoke about, on the way that we do our work to help shape our strategic priorities, our strategic direction and of course, our budget priorities. Next slide, please. Because we highly value input from our patient population, we employ feedback gathering methods or tactics that meet them where they are. So first and foremost, we, we do listening sessions with community groups. And these, these listening sessions, what that look, what they look like is staff schedule a time to present to community groups at meetings that are already scheduled. And they gave us twenty, twenty to thirty minutes where we present five to 10 minutes. And then we, we have a conversation with them and we listen to their feedback, their thoughts, we answer questions. And, and all of this is going to be in a community engagement report that you will be receiving. You will have the preliminary report in your packet. You will have a final version in the next coming, coming weeks. But you, you will see some key takeaways there, key takeaways. So these are listening sessions. You will see a list of community and neighborhood groups in, in your packet on page thirteen of the community engagement report. Then we also have online telephone and in-person surveys so that we can capture feedback from individuals that aren't, that aren't part of these community groups or that aren't able to make our community conversations. So we do have, we pick up the phone, as, as we have said to you all before, we pick up the phone and engage with MAP members and conduct interviews over the phone. We also do in-person interviews at clinics or at resource centers and things of that nature, faith-based centers, schools and events. A third tactic that we employ is community conversations. And that's the one that gets the most promotion and that you hear about the most because those are the ones that we try to recruit people to attend, right? Listening sessions, we schedule those. Telephone surveys and online surveys, you don't hear much about that because we're actually doing that ourselves, right? But community conversations, you hear about that the most. And so as you heard us before, last month, I believe, we came to talk to you about this. We, this year was the first time that we held these community conversations out in the neighborhoods where people live. So Yusenia will talk more in detail about our efforts. Then new this year is a hybrid model of community conversation so that we're having people in person as well as online via Facebook Live. And those are the ones that y'all were talking about when we first came in to the room earlier today. Another method is our community advisory committees. And y'all are familiar with this, but this is, this is advisory committees where we can have community members, stakeholders, faith-based leaders, school leaders gather together and, and, and hear about what we're doing in eastern Travis County in terms of service expansion. And then we hear from them, you know, so that, so that we can get to know the, the communities better. And then we also added another method in the last year and a half, and that, that is a community engagement platform. And so that is for people who are able to have technology access. You know, you, there, there's a variety of different tactics for, for everybody so that we can make sure that we reach those that pay for services as well as those that receive services. And so that's an engagement platform that you can, you can go and access by going to participate dot centralhealth.net. Now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Yusenia Ramos, who will share more details about our activities over the course of the last year.
Thank you, Ivan. Next slide, please. And so I'll start with the systems planning voice of the community. From October 2021 through January 2022, Central Health embarked on a robust community engagement process to gather feedback from patients and MAP members, individuals advocating on behalf of people with low income and professionals representing institutions in the fields of healthcare, education and transportation. The team executed a total of nineteen different community engagement activities, which included community conversations, email updates to those who express an interest in staying informed and in-person and online surveys. And also listening sessions at already scheduled community group meetings like Ivan mentioned. And next, for the healthcare equity plan, in June 2022, Central Health staff went back to the community groups and members who participated in the systems planning and voice of the community work to update them on the outcome of those efforts, including the recently adopted healthcare equity plan and the assessments that helped shape it. The team executed a total of twelve community engagement activities, including community conversations at Navarro Early College High School, Southeast Health and Wellness Center and at the Central Health Office here in East Austin. We also had email updates to those who express interest in staying updated about our healthcare equity plan. And we hosted, or we joined listening sessions at already scheduled community group meetings. And on to the 2023 budget and strategic priorities. From July 2022 now through September 2022, Central Health is executing several community engagement activities to inform and gather feedback from community members on the fiscal year 2023 budget. This included community conversations at the Turner Roberts Recreation Center in Colony Park, the Southeast Health and Wellness Center and the Central Health Office here in East Austin. We have also sent email updates to those who subscribe to our budget and listen, and joined listening sessions at already scheduled community groups, group meetings. Each of these projects have their own page on our community engagement platform, which you can access by going to participate dot centralhealth.net. You'll be able to access all of these projects on there. You can see some of the key takeaways on each of these topics in the preliminary community engagement report that's provided in your packets. And next slide, please. And on to the clinic expansions. So for both the Dell Valley Health and Wellness Center and the Hornsby Bend Health and Wellness Center projects, we have included for the community engagement activities, email updates, listening sessions, a groundbreaking ceremony for both sites and an advisory committee for both sites, as well as a survey during the groundbreaking ceremonies. Each of these projects will also, they also have a page on the participate dot centralhealth.net, which is our engagement platform. And it's, it is part of our website. Again, you can see the key takeaways from these engagement activities in the preliminary community engagement report in your packets. See, Ivan?
Yes, thank you, next slide, please. So we, our staff use best practice communication and outreach methods using a logic model based on the theory of change that we've talked to you all about before. This model helps us ensure that we are thoughtful and methodical in our, in the selection, implementation and evaluation of communication and outreach tactics. So you'll see in, on the screen, a sample of the tactics we've used to inform Travis County residents, including MAP members of ways to provide feedback and get involved. So I won't read them, but you see them on the screen. We, we send an email invitations every time that we have a community conversation to the now 7,000 contact lists that we have on, that, that we have. And this list includes healthcare partners, nonprofit organizations, community groups, advisory committees, health champions, community advocacy groups and so on and so forth. Then we also use paid digital advertising. Our paid media efforts specifically target residents with low income living in Travis County. Digital ads are in Spanish and in English. A most recent digital ad achieved 1.3 million impressions resulting in 7,600 clicks. We also, of course, we also do social media. In addition to email invitations and reminders, we promote community conversations and online surveys on our Facebook, Twitter and Instagram social media channels. And these posts have historically reached about 1,700 users. We also, as I mentioned earlier, we also use direct phone calls as a method where we call our MAP members, we also call representatives, representatives from, from community groups, faith-based centers, schools and organizations by phone so that we can ask them to get their, their students or student or families involved in our, in our, in our engagement activities. We also have, we have a robust Facebook group outreach effort where our staff members share information to about 120 different Facebook groups that, that, that are very, very much plugged into each of these neighborhoods that we, that we talked about. And then of course, we do a lot of media relations as, as we've shared with y'all in the past. We use traditional media outreach strategies to inform the community through local media channels about all, all of the things that we, that we do. Next slide, next slide, please. This slide I'm very excited about because it shows you the number of participants that we've had over the course of the, of the fiscal year. So 630 participants and it shows you the breakdown, and this is also in your report, in your packet, by the way, by gender, by age, by race and ethnicity, preferred language and then type of coverage. And we've gotten better at attracting or tracking demographic of, of the people that we, that participate in our, in our, in our engagement efforts. So as you can see, 630 people participated, out of which 54% were in MAP, MAP-based Medicare or Medicaid. My two overarching takeaways here is one, like I said earlier, we're getting better at gathering demographic data from our participants. And two, we're also getting better at involving people living at or below 200% FPL in our, in our engagement activities. Next slide, please. Now this slide shows the participants' breakdown by zip code. And so as you can see, the, the reach is very broad. And that is because, because of the many different tactics that we employ, not, not just one or the other, not just community conversations, but also listening sessions at already scheduled community group meetings. Or we also do online surveys, as we mentioned earlier. So this really helps us have a broad reach throughout the county. And that's all I have.
Can we explain active participants?
Sure.
Passive participants?
Sure, so participants are people who come to our community conversations, people who let, who attend community group meetings, people who fill out a survey or we talk to over the phone to, to answer a survey. People who go to our community engagement platform and submit a question or write a comment. And we gather all of this information and we share with you key takeaways for all of these, for each of these projects in our, in your community engagement report, in your packet. And we can also share more detail. So, as I. Thank you, Ted.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
So, one more.
No, that was my bad.
Correct the pause.
No, I know.
This, this slide just shows you the amazing team that I have the honor of, really working with. And so yes, we have our engagement outreach team. So this is not, this is, all of the work that we talked about isn't just done by us that you see in front of us, but it's, it's done by a lot, by, by, by very, very many people. And you see our engagement outreach team on the screen and amazing individuals that I have the honor of working with.
Now, that's the pause, that's the real pause.
Excellent presentation, guys. Guys, a lot of hard work and. A lot of hard work in trying to engage our population and provide them with information. And I know I really appreciate it. So thank you guys very much for what you do and your team, many of which I know. Manager Valdez?
Yes, as Ted will know that I know, this is a, a black and white change in how Central Health did outreach. Prior, I have to say, prior to my coming on, at least y'all have been, and I thank you, Ivan, greatly. You know, you made a good decision, Ted, when you brought him on. Because he understood my concerns about the Spanish-speaking population, okay? And bilingual, not meaning monolingual Spanish. So in that vein though, I still would like to know if it's possible, you know, you give us the, the statistics, the percentages. I, I think 630 people is great, but percentage-wise, can you give us the numbers? And with respect to the gender breakdown or where is that sheet? I think it's one of the, one of the first ones, second, third? The pie, the pie, the pie. And what you have, male, females, males? If I could know those, the demographics for those numbers, for the males and females that you're actually talking to, because we don't see that here. All the females are lumped together, all the males are lumped together. And I don't see a breakdown of the males and then a breakdown of the females. Unless I, I missed it.
No.
Which is possible, I could have.
You didn't miss it, we can provide that.
Yeah, that, I think that's a meaningful number for us to have, especially as we look to advocating for, for clinics or services and resources for gender-specific populations. Thank you and good job.
Thank you. Thank you to the dream team. Appreciate all your efforts and what you've been doing for the past, since I've been here, it's been a while. But I really appreciate your due diligence and going out to these communities. Just on that side note, I hope there, there will be further outreach to the Muslim community, to mosques. Because every time I'm out there, no one knows what Central Health is. And there are many who are living below the poverty rate, especially in the run-burke area. So I hope in the future, we can reach out to that community. Now, in terms of your survey, what is the percentage rate of completion?
Yeah, one survey.
For both surveys, I'm just curious in terms of.
So. I don't have the numbers apparently, but they, it is in your, in the engagement report. We had about fifty to sixty surveys completed for both Dell Valley and Hornsby Bend. So we administered these surveys at the groundbreaking celebrations, both in Dell Valley and in Hornsby Bend. So that's about, and then for the Voice of the Community, that was another survey that we did. And that one is also in your, in your community outreach, community engagement report. And that was online, over the phone and also in person at Sunrise Street. That one had a higher number of completed surveys. So there's no completion rate because we're not sending it out to a, a, a larger number and only getting certain, certain percentage of people to complete it. But we're going out to the community and administering the survey, which gives us only the number of surveys completed.
Okay, so when you're administering this survey, just to correct me, it's paper, it's not online?
It depends. So for the Voice of the Community, it was paper, it was online and it was over the phone as an interview.
Okay, in terms of the completion rate, I understand, what about those who started the survey, didn't complete?
We can get that for you, but.
Just curious to know in terms of it, like the survey, is it long enough? Are people having any barriers to completion? I know it's really hard to have people complete surveys. I'm just curious to know, maybe we need to shorten it for this. Or maybe to do multiple surveys to focus on one area in specific rather than going over multiple areas that we want to address. Because personally speaking, I have short attention span at times that if it's something I don't, cannot be completed within a few minutes. that if something I don't, cannot be completed within a few minutes, I will lose interest unless there's a reason behind it, motivation to complete it. So I just want to be mindful that limitation in the future. That was really, and one last thing in terms.
So those are very good points, and also the surveys are included in the community engagement report in the very back.
Yes, I'm, I'm also looking at it, and just like, there are a lot of good questions. Maybe we need to break it up to focus on one specific domain. And in once we do that, it's shorter, we get more responses, we can assess it rather than trying to come to multiple domains. I'm just telling you from.
Different for different audiences, exactly what you're saying. So for the unhoused population, when we spent the day at Sunrise Church, we were spending thirty minutes, sometimes longer, with a person doing the survey. Because the conversation was really a jumping off point to many other, how to connect to services. So it just depends on the, on the audience, for sure. So that's a great one.
Thank you so much. And my last thing, in terms of the platform, is it possible, like, that you can demonstrate how it works? And I think it would be helpful for the general population for us as well.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And it's on our website, too.
I understand, just I think it would probably be helpful for us to see it. Thank you so much for all your efforts and the work you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Manager Valdez.
Thank you, and thank you, Maron, for bringing that question up. I'm sorry, Shannon, did you have?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Manager Jones.
Just two questions. I join my colleagues and thank you for the work you do. It's great. It really makes a difference. I just saw, I saw it quickly, two demographics type of question. Where is Navarro?
It's off Peyton Jen Road in Runberg area.
So we had healthcare equity plan discussions in basically Navarro, which is Peyton Jen, Southeast Health and Wellness and Central Health. Was there any reason we didn't do anything in the Northeast?
Well, so we did the budget community conversation in Colony Park. So I think it's a matter of just being strategic and picking the locations where we can get the most people to come to the meetings. That, I mean, and before COVID, we had plans to take, we had plans to take board meetings and meetings on the road to more locations, so we're picking that back, back up now, so.
I would just encourage us to do.
And that is why we, we did Colony Park for the budget and strategic priority community conversation.
Particularly for the African-American community, fifty percent of the population lives in that quadrant. So I want to encourage that. Second thing is, and this is different, what are we doing in Jonestown Oak Hill area? Because what is occurring demographically is that the population of Austin is of all groups are moving further out because of economy. So are we doing things out, and in those areas particularly, like with this at Jonestown?
If I may.
Yes, Mike.
I, I will say that on that one, that is an area where, if you look at the last demographic report and seeing the growth in poverty, that we need to invest more time in. And the reason I'm jumping in ahead of this one is, if you'll, if you'll permit me, team, really, the, the concentration has been, you know, in the areas, you know, that you've seen in the maps, but particularly Eastern Travis County. And, but if I could just say to the, the point, and you, you may have some things perhaps that, that are more, more responsive to Manager Jones, but I'm just, in general, wanted to say that I will take full ownership of the things that we have not done in some of the high-growth poverty areas in the western part of the county. But duly noted.
Well, yeah, blame me. I'm just, I was just wondering because I noticed that recent demographics profile indicates, particularly that area of northwest Travis County, that Leander and Seed, Seed of Park, I think, are spilling over into Travis County.
Yes. You've also got some pockets. If you drive out Oak Hill, you, you really need to get out there on some of the back streets.
Right.
Two ninety, it is, it's almost like you're in a different, different place altogether, what's developing out there.
Thank you. So Lonestown opened a clinic a couple of years ago in Lonestown, Jonestown. And so we joined forces with them to help them with, with groundbreaking. And then our community outreach specialists have been also trying to get out there in that area. Note taken, though, we will continue to, to, to expand those efforts there.
We should also mention that we do have two different, two consultants that we work with, outreach consultants. So Committee Coalition for Health and Latino Healthcare Forum. So the model that the team has created is they're helping generate the leads, so making the connections. And our outreach team takes those leads and then follows up and tries to get people enrolled in, in coverage. So that model is continuing as well, with hopes to expand our outreach team in future years.
Thank you.
Any health workers?
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Jones. Manager Valdez.
Thank you. And thank you, I want to thank Maron for bringing that question up about the Muslim and other, other non-English speaking populations. When I first came on the board, that was the one thing that bothered me, that we had not reached out to them, to Central Health, Central Health had not. And, and they ultimately did. They, one of the first letters we received that concerned about lack of services, available services, was a letter from a gentleman in George, in Jonestown. And I remember that a community care was supposed to have opened a, a small clinic out there in the Jonestown area. And it's been more recently that the Oak Hill has blown up because people are getting away from the central city area. They can't afford to live in this, in this area anymore. And they have to look for places outside of AISD because that's the biggest taxing jurisdiction within Travis County. But there, I know that the first medical, community needs assessment was conducted by Latino Healthcare Forum. And that was in the Runberg area. And they came up with like, you know, twenty different languages being spoken there and the numbers, and also places to go. So I remember initially, this would have been several years ago, Ted, maybe you can remember, they were going out to the temples, and they were going out to, that's how I got to meet Amin Salahabean, okay? Because they had a little clinic that they were running, and they were doing it all on volunteer work. And so I, I don't know whether or not that fell by the wayside, but I know like in healthcare form, it's no longer in the Runberg area. You've got another group out there that's working, and it may be through the city that that is, is being done. But it would be good to reconnect with some of those organizations and faith-based organizations that I didn't see here. To get back in New, I don't know if you remember New, she was a community health worker also. Also had brought us in with the Thai and the Asian community. And Amin with Muslim and, and Hindu and, and that population. So if maybe you can touch base again with them, it would be a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Valdez. I just wanted to follow up to Manager Musaitif. So as part of the Voice of the Community, we did have a listening session meeting with the North Austin Muslim Community Center. And that name may have come from you. I don't, I'm not sure. But that, they were part of our Voice of the Community conversation. Not saying we don't need to do more, but we at least connected with them back in October. Thank you.
Again, thank you, guys, for all. Manager Ma'Tony.
Thank you, Chair. Not so much a comment on the presentation, and I just feel a, a move to point it out or make a point of clarification. And you, of course, on many times have been the first to remind me the same. But often, we, we, we may, and I know it's unintentional, refer to those who pay into the system and those who receive services from the system in a manner of dichotomy. And, you know, I just, I, I would, I would like to reiterate, as you've reminded me, Dr. Bell, many times, Chair Bell, many times in the past, that those, you know, who are receiving services are paying into the system as well. And by means of growing household costs, you know, homeownership, if that were to have been the case, rental, if that is, is the case, and just the inflation of costs all around that, that result from, well, just recent circumstances, obviously, but also taxation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Ma'Tony. Hey, I don't see anyone. Michael.
Thank you, members, for your, your questions and your comments. We're certainly going to take these to heart. And as pointed out, there's a lot of things that we are still restarting post-pandemic. I would say we're probably about ninety-five percent of the way there, but there's still, obviously, some things. But let me just say something about the team. It is really a joy, a pleasure, and an honor to be out in the field with them. And just, just to see the way that they work and the way that they engage with people and build, and in some cases rebuild trust where that trust has been forsaken. And, and just, just really welcome people so warmly. It's, it's unlike anything that I've ever seen. And so what you saw today was a, a lot of pictures and a lot of numbers around the efforts and around connections. But what you don't see from the slide, the, the, they show the people that were on the team, is just how they are able to, like I say, make those connections and build and rebuild trust and show people that we want to help people live the healthiest life possible. And that is a human art, that no amount of technology or data, it just, it just flows. And so thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you, guys, for all you do. We appreciate it. There was a typo. Corrected it. There was a typo on your motion sheets. It's been corrected. We're all good. Agenda item number two, confirm the next regular board meeting time and location. Date, time, and location. Managers, our next Central Health Board of Managers meeting is tentatively scheduled for next Wednesday, September the seventh, twenty twenty-two, at five P M. at Central Health Administrative Office, it's eleven eleven East Cesar Chavez Street, Austin, Texas, seven eight seven oh two. At this time, I'm ready to accept a motion for adjournment, Manager Valdez.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Manager Valdez. I have a second by Manager Musaitif. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned.
Thank you.